Did you?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead, motion to adopt the agenda.
I move without agenda as presented.
I'll second.
Motion to adjourn, please, favor.
Hi.
Okay, we're gonna go with the lodging tax guidelines. Before we start, I would like one person at a time to talk. Because if we start talking over one another, Don can't figure out what's going on. And if we can't do another match, I will wrap the gavel and we will pay for it for another set. I have no problem doing that. Okay, who wants to start?
Um, well, I will, I guess, because I already...
Already started.
Well, I already saw some things that we've talked about a little bit. Um, anyway, it's, it's very good, and I think the application is pretty similar to three or four others that I looked at. And, um, the only thing I was looking at was the program guidelines from the city of Enterprise. And there's a very nice list here of priorities and limitations, which I thought was very clear cut and, um, you know, easy to read.
Uh huh.
And so that was, that was one thing that I, um, just thought we could look at as to make changes or, you know, in our, um, our guidelines that we are, that we had printed out. And the other thing I think was that we talked about was the radius of 20 miles. Because, um, we think maybe we should add this, other, um, events outside, further than 20 miles, that might bring people into Lakeview, like the mosquito festival and other things like that. So, those were my two suggestions for, um, change.
So, um, in the types of project programs events to be considered, middle of page two, we put in there consideration of other events is on a case-by-case basis. And that would be a good place where I could put consideration of other events on a case-by-case basis outside of the 20-mile radius in Lake County.
Counselor Taylor, um, just for the notes purposes, can you tell, um, for the, for the minutes, what page you're on? So, um, that can be addressed.
Page two, which actually...
Page number one.
It's, okay. It's auto filled, I added that footer in there, but it's not correct, so page two.
Okay.
Which I'll correct all of those, there's a few other corrections there as well. But if we feel comfortable with putting that in there, I can edit that to say other events outside of 20, because I know we talked about, you know, including...
Oh yeah, MCDs and...
IL and stuff like that, yeah.
Stuff that goes on flush.
Right, they're all soft parts of county, so that's something I think are well within. Um, I can tell the council I reviewed this, I didn't see necessarily any problems, there's just some typos. And then I think Enterprise is, looks very similar, um. One thing I'm going to suggest as well, and it hasn't been presented yet, is a lot of this application is based on the city of Newburgh, Newburgh has developed a contract that goes along with this, and it's referenced in here. You guys have a copy of it, but it's a one-pager, very simple, and it indemnifies the city so that your guys' largest is not, um, ended coming back on you if there's a lawsuit. Any entity that takes money from you is then responsible for defending it if somebody decides to challenge it on a lawsuit. I don't see that as a rule or something like that, because these guidelines are all going to be within the lodging associations, um, and that. But occasionally you can get sour grapes of choosing, you know, there's always choosing one versus another. And if somebody gets angry enough about it, sometimes there can be litigation over that. And it's not the city's gut jaw or guideline to get sucked into the middle of lawsuits, so most, and almost every jurisdiction that I've seen, in fact, Clamath County is a 10-page contract that, which I think is overkill. Because we're not dealing with, you know, they're, they're into the $40,000, $50,000. I mean, they're, they, they fund some very large-scale activities, so I can, where you're definitely going to potentially generate more litigation. So I can see what they're doing, but I think in a minimum use, and I'll bring a copy to the, um, I will bring a copy to adopt, uh, at the, if you guys finalize something at the next meeting. But I wouldn't really suggest you have that contract, just, it's necessary for your legal protection. Because again, you're doing something beneficial for folks, and you don't want to get the head of the fees get bit, so.
Sorry, I walked in late, are you talking about a contract for something, say, larger than $5,000?
No, any, 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 Newburgh does it with everybody, and I think you have to.
So I just caught, I was just, we were just kind of going over, there's a few minor changes. And Newburgh has a contract, which I did put the verbiage, actually, I have a copy of it right here. And so I did put that they will have to sign a contract.
And I, and I'm going to suggest that we use Newburgh's, which is some modifications, because it incorporates one, there has to be fidelity to the program application, so they can't ask, say, they're doing one thing and then change it on you. They're legally bound to, okay, we're applying under this grant application to do this, and then do it to something else. It also says if the funds aren't used, it comes back, so there's a contractual obligation to use it as they applied for it. And then any special, and then it also enables any special conditions the council wants to impose, like, I've seen, I, I just spent some time looking at some of the ones that have been approved for Clamath County. And for example, they wanted, okay, we're sponsoring this one event, we want a special condition that you're going to offer X number of scholarships for folks to be able to do this, things of that nature that are, you know, helpful, you know, for larger type items. So i- if there was something that you would kind of bother the council, want to approve it, but wanted to say, hey, we want to see a little bit of a tweak to it or something along those lines, it gives you that ability. But you don't have to, but the main thing is, if they apply for something and represent something, they have to stick with what they told you. And that's, I think, the important part, plus, we don't want to generate lawsuits out of this, and this kind of just prevents that issue.
That's kind of why I like Newburgh's, that they have this, um, programs report to follow up.
To follow up, yeah, we suggested that last, last time too.
And they have two of them, they have a progress report and a final report, and I think that makes sense. Then you've got a really clear record, and honestly, it protects the organization that's getting it just as much as the organization's getting it out. Because if they're following this process, the county report, whatever, then of course can throw something out if they do, if somebody decides to challenge it. So the reality is protecting all parties involved.
So, under the reporting process, I put that they are to submit a boardly progress report on a date to determine any final report within 30 days after the project, program, or event to the town of Lakeview Town Council. Are there any changes that you guys, if you have lots of...
The only thing you might want to do, you might want to consider is maybe having for grants under a certain amount. Like, if you're just talking $1,000, maybe you just want the final report, because this is like a one-time event.
Okay.
A progress report is a little bit duplicative versus a campaign, so you might want to set some amounts. You know, grants from 0 to 2,000, for example, are this, grants from 5 to 10 have the more process or are going to last for...
What time events?
Exactly, or a duration of a particular time, that just gives you guys some transparency in how it is there.
Some curious thoughts on that.
As a work session, you had a good...
Do you want to set a limit, so?
Yeah, I, I don't...
Well, I think that's a good idea, because like you say, a thousand dollars versus, you know, seven, eight thousand and...
A lot of people are just...
Just the ending, the la, what they've spent when they are through with it.
So do you think, like, under $5,000, we would only need a final report? What's your guys' number on the threshold there?
I think under $5,000 is a good number.
I would consider that kind of a...
The other one, under $5,000, or, um, a project that is more than, um, going to take three months or something like that. Something where it's going to be a long-term...
Planning, you mean, the planning part?
Yeah, well, it's where it's, it's going to take more than three months to accomplish. You might want to have a progress report. If you're giving something and it's a year campaign, you probably want to see something in six months.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it's under $5,000 unless in 30 days to complete, we would just want a final report.
Or less than 60 days.
Or 60, yeah.
Yeah.
Anything over...
A lot of events need to take time to get going.
Six-year project slash event slash...
Is there any requirement that people have liability insurance, is that...
A lot of places do, um, Clamath County requires it then to have insurance and have us listed as an additional insurer.
Let's see if it's...
An additional insurer?
Right, can I say something?
Yeah.
On the liability insurance, we actually have a book for events that have happened, like when they do the parade. The, um, like Jeff got one today, um, from the chamber, because there's an event coming up. So I get, we get a copy of their insurance form that gets sent to us saying that they have insured for that event.
Right.
So we do get copies of those, and there is two folders full of them, yeah.
And so that probably should be required.
The contract does say that we, um, basically hold harmless, because the city will correct that.
But if the, if the event organizer has no money, hold harmless clauses are only as good as the person that's involved. So making sure that they have, Clamath County does require it, so if it's something, it gets pretty hard to hold us liable for something like this, because we're just giving somebody money, but it's been done. So, the problem is, you can sometimes then edge out some of your smaller organizations. But the safest approach is to require an insurance certificate, naming this as an additional insurer.
Yeah, we, we do that for, like, Saturday market and these other things, so I think it's a good idea.
We, we have a section permitting and licensing, and we could very easily add the same here as...
Permitting and licensing.
Yeah, it says the award of grant money through this program does not supersede the need for proper permitting and licensing with the town of Lakeview and/or other governing agents. Proof of all necessary permits and licenses is required before grant funds can be dispersed.
My, my suggestion is that other, I would suggest relevant or applicable federal, state, and local authorities. Because that's your health department, that's, you know, if they're on federal land, all of that type of stuff. And proof...
Proof of liability insurance.
Proof of liability insurance, naming the town of Lakeview as an additional insurer.
Federal...
State and local, federal, state, and local, or, excuse me, federal, state, and municipal.
Okay, and then proof of insurance...
Liability insurance and naming the town as an additional insurer.
And then would we want a number? And let's have a couple...
There are minimums usually at the insurance company.
The insurance company would...
So my suggestion is, before the next meeting, we would ask Andrew what he would, or insurance agent, what he would suggest as what that should be. Um, another example would be the, if you want, I can provide, um, the Clamath counties, there's pretty high, it's like $2 million.
I think a lot over $1 million.
A lot over $1 million.
Yeah, a million dollar liability is pretty standard.
Yeah, with a minimum coverage of a million dollar per occurrence.
And that's probably what Saturday market has too, is probably a million.
I, I don't know, actually, I never...
What?
I've never run their policy, but I know they're bringing in every year.
Yeah, a million dollars is pretty standard. You do see some 500,000, that a million is a pretty standard number.
And then maybe the town of Lakeview hold harmless, is that what you said at the end there?
Mm-hmm, that provision from the...
Proof of million dollar liability insurance.
And if they sign the contract, you know, sign the contract is conditional of the award, that would be included in the contract.
Similar to what I looked at from the...
Yeah, we'll have to, I can edit out Newburgh's, um, and put in...
Also, I did like that you guys put in that promotional materials need to say what this is being provided by. Almost every jurisdiction that I've seen identifies that, and that also helps your constituencies that are paying this feel better about it. Because that gives credit to the motels that this tax is being levied through. So that, that is done in every jurisdiction that I've seen that does these type of small grant programs.
Well, and that was something that we had to discuss, but I saw in another, I think that's...
It's almost in everyone.
It got brought up to me.
I saw it in Baker, I saw it in Clamath, it, it's just, if they want money, then you, they have a right, you have a right to have at least that tagline put in there that was written right upon it. Like I said, that also helps your constituency, or again, your...
On the town as a whole, because we've made donations and our name wasn't used as credit for any of that and some other stuff.
So, so simply by setting all this up, following this practice, having minutes recorded of when we're reviewing these and adopting them, do you foresee any reason why when you, you know, when you get audited, why if someone came in and requested my authority, might we have any problem?
No, that's why these, that's why...
Exactly, that's why we have to do...
That's why these procedures have been adopted. Some places have gone a lot simpler, I mean, there is a, Baker County has a really, has a fairly simple one. With very simple guidelines, it's a little easier, there's not much oversight, but I've never seen them, I've never seen theirs, and theirs is a mile and a half a acre, so, excuse me.
We, they all got a copy of Baker.
So Baker's is another one that's, as a sample as far as, um, Newburgh's is a little more formal, um, but there's another one. And it just kind of spans the spectrum from what, all of these are within the realm of legal possibilities. So it's what the town feels comfortable with, any, having guidelines of any sort and some accountability is going to go a long way to check them. So there isn't like a completely 100% perfect way of doing this. Um, one thing I like about the Newburgh application is it sets, it really sets out in plain verbiage, I mean, it just adopts right from the statute the definition, so folks know what are kind of the range.
Okay, so that's something I did not, um, copy all of, because they had a lot of stuff that was very specific and more limited. And so I did take out tours and promotion, tours and related facilities.
I would suggest you have it all in there, because those are all possibilities. Unless the council doesn't really want to look at grant applications, I mean, you guys, that, you guys don't, that's permissible and you can. You don't have to, so if you don't want to be looking at facility stuff, that's legally permissible, but you don't, that's not something you have to do.
To fund someone else's acquisition for a facility?
Yes, like...
See, I'm rather, if we're going to do that, then we want to...
Then you do it yourselves.
Well, and, and the reason I didn't put it in there is because it made it sound like it only limits it to conference center, convention center, visitor information center.
If it's a facilities thing, it is limited to that, so that's kind of the...
Well, there's more definitions I just didn't read all, and other...
You're saying we don't have to do it, but yet it's legally required.
No, it's a legally required category you can use, in other words, okay, so...
No, it's not have to.
It's not have to, it's just, it's, it...
I hit the difference.
It, yeah, it's, it's a menu option that's legally permissible, but it's not something that you ha, you can't, you'd have to do.
But we could if we so choose, if someone actually...
Exactly, or you could do it yourselves, I mean, you, you guys could buy a, you guys could open your own business center, for example. That would clearly be within the ambit of what you're doing, but I don't know if you want to do a third-party organization, that's a... And that gets a little, and the issue with those two is that turns on one of those bigger projects that has a lot of accountability. So maybe from a logistics standpoint, you don't want to do it, because the headache of, well, basically, it almost becomes like another town project. You're having to, you know, you're, there will be the construction, you're going to, because if your name's going to be on it, you're going to want to make sure all that does, so that if, from a policy standpoint, you don't want to put that burden on town staff, then don't include that.
So, but if someone did apply for that and we felt it was legitimate and needed...
If you don't have it in your guidelines, then you...
Can't do it.
Can't do it.
Okay.
These guidelines, the state requirements are the floor, your guidelines are the ceiling. So, once you've adopted these guidelines, this is what the project needs to do.
But it still doesn't mean you have to accept them.
No.
I mean, we could, or...
So you can have it in there.
...with a reason, say, ah, you know...
Well, yeah, I'm not saying...
Yeah, you can always say, no, we...
...project that comes in, I was just wondering about the...
Remember, these are basic guidelines, you just get in the door, then you're going to have to make decisions between various projects of, you know, these are just, like I said, these are, these are like pre-screening questions for a job applicant. Then you're going to have to make a policy decision about what is more valuable.
It seems like there's a lot that want to say that we, you know, set precedents by accepting some and rejecting others, and...
There really isn't precedent that you can...
If you want to reject anything, you can reject any of our...
Yes.
Yeah, as long as you're within the legal confines of what you're allowed to do, and follows in your own policies, then yeah. You can say, you know, this tourism event means more to us than this tourism event, it's...
You can't fund everything.
No, you have the right to make choices. And remember too, the other option you have, you guys could just pick five events, or six events or something, you fund every year. You know, you can do, for example, like the roundup, you can do a sponsorship roundup every year. I mean, that, that's another option as well, if you don't want to take these applications in on a regular basis. You could just say, you know what, we're going to put 15% to this, 15% to this, 15% to this. And if it's in those categories, you're fine, so remember, this isn't the only way to skin the cat, so that's kind of the...
That would have to be in our guidelines then.
Uh, these are guidelines for grants, you could just say, we're setting aside 15% for these grants, and the rest of it is going to fund X, Y, and Z every year. That's up to, that's up to the council, as long as it's...
So we don't have to have it in the, um...
No, this is just for particular people that are applying for fun, whatever level funding you're making available. You do need to be spending the funds, obviously, you don't want to have these, unless you're going to do a more long-term project. But you would really need to identify that.
So, one of my first things that I needed to add in here is the town of Lakeview ordinance that we passed for lodging tax funds. I need those numbers.
We can get that due.
And then it's set up on the top. The other thing is, I have some numbers to fix under, which you weren't here for, but, um, this was one that somebody else found, and I'd really like to add that in there, activities not eligible for funding the individuals. So we need to, I'll have to address some numbers. Jeff mentioned, under that same category, organization whose primary purpose is to influence, promote, or attempt to initiate legislation and...
Or legislative action.
We want to change that to initiate legislative action.
Or legislation.
Or, you want both, okay.
Because you can all, there is not everything, there's certain, that, I see, the point of that is, um, this is kind of a little bit duplicative, but it is, that's similar to political candidates or philosophies, but like a one-ish...
Yeah, I copied it off of Enterprise, it wasn't in Newburgh's, and I saw that and I thought, you know, that would be really good as a town to just not have anybody else in the data or politics.
Travel outside of Lakeview, you know, I, I think that misses...
Unless you guys think that you're ever going to be a site force, like a political convention or something like that.
Yeah, something tells me it's probably not going to happen.
Yeah, I, I, and that's why you don't tend to see, the towns that don't adopt these, I notice, tended to be your areas with your conference centers, you know, where you're going to have more political activities, like, you don't see this in Lebanon, for example, things like that, because, you know, they've got the little conference center, so those, but that kind of action happens in bigger communities. That's been, that's over in the Malamet, so, or Jackson County, so that's why it makes money for them. I mean, again, you're trying to tailor this to your particular community, and it also just gets, because getting into the politics stuff, that can get you close to the edge of not being quite tourist-related.
Kind of why I just thought, perfect, and then the other thing is, I thought I put it in here somewhere, but I can't find it, is, um, a calendar of due dates.
It is in here, I saw that.
I know, I know, I can't find it now.
It's under, it's on page, um, it's under grant application process on the, um...
On page, page what?
On page one.
Oh, okay.
On the, this is the second page, um, application must be considered, probably going to be approved by the town council quarterly in the months of March, June, September, and December.
But, I was going to be more specific, um, similar to this, where it says, application deadline, presentation date, award date. I wanted to put, you know, so, I wanted to make it, because I don't want to make them to be like, oh, my event's March 8th, and they submitted it prior to March 1st, and expect us to have an answer by March 7th, you know, before that. We don't have a town council meeting type thing, so I was going to get specific timeframes more so.
So that brings up a question for me, like, retroactively paying past bills, are we, you know, we would say no to...
Well...
That's the guideline.
By having these guidelines, that's a...
All prior to, everything says prior to, yeah.
Well, you don't really have an application process if you're not going to do that, so that's...
No, the ones that came in before, uh...
Under this?
Were, they came in before this process even started. And I think, uh, the only one there that I don't agree on is, uh, administrative, for administrative purposes. But all the others that I'm fine with, and I'll tell you why.
Let me just discuss it now, so we can decide.
Because when I was over at the mayor's convention, I had two different mayors come up to me, said they stayed out of Juniper. They came into Lakeview, they wandered around town, went through our shop, they ate, ate here, they went grocery shopping, went back out. They're good, they plan on coming back, they said Lakeview is a nice town, and it's clean, and said the people were friendly.
Well, here's the thing, we're, we're adopting hopefully an ordinance next week.
It's, this isn't going to be an ordinance, this is going to be a resolution.
Okay, a resolution, but we're adopting it next week.
Correct.
And we've already committed to some things prior to that.
Correct.
And so what we committed to prior, I think, has to stand until we sign that.
That makes sense.
I mean, you know, that's...
Well, yeah, we have to deal with the people that are waiting for it, we can't just say, this is what it is, sorry.
We, we're backtracking now for two months, you know, that's, that's not the way we should do it.
And they need to be dealt with properly.
Because the resolution is when it takes effect or immediately, then the resolution...
So next meeting, you want to have that full discussion, or you want, I mean, this is a work session, we're not, that's not on our agenda to vote on those items.
Well, we can't vote on anything today, but we...
Right, yeah, that's what I'm saying.
We can discuss it, because it's a part of the lodging tax.
Right, so next time, no more, go over that. I, I mean, if we discuss it too much, then we'll pretty much have our opinions, and it will be like a...
I think we'll have opinions already, but...
We've discussed it a great length already, so I think just, next meeting, put on the agenda, we'll find out what it right then.
I think, yeah, next meeting, this gives us an idea of what we're looking forward to moving forward. We can, you know, if you want to make, make your vote based on what we set now, or prior to, whatever, that's up to you, what you...
Now, any voting stuff you guys remember has to go into the public meetings, so you don't, you guys can't be really discussing this outside of...
It has to be over here.
Exactly.
You can't be today, we're not voting on anything.
Right, so if you've got any other consensus thing, I mean, you guys can reach consensus, kind of what you think, and that's what we produce for you guys to vote on, but that's as far as you can go. But if there is any discussion you have, have it today, that's why you're having the work session, so.
Now, did you, did you put a maximum amount on there?
Yep.
And I think we should have something there that say, no more than...
Well, they can ask for the world, we could approve any amount we want. Just because they're asking for $100,000 don't mean that we have to give them $100,000.
I think, I don't think putting a maximum would be beneficial, but...
And what this agreement has also done is it also states, once, um, funds are all expended, they're done. And that's usually done on a fiscal year, because that's, because they're coming in. And that's, that might be another thing you might want to consider, maybe you want to do it quarterly, maybe you want to do it twice a year. Clamath County does it on a fiscal year basis, you know, the applications start in this period, then they're all awarded by July 1st, and then it kind of starts over, so that's kind of...
We talked about that, but, yeah, I don't know if that works here as well.
Our fiscal year runs from June, or July to the first through June.
Well, yeah, they can send an application in any time, even if it's like nine months away, but there are deadlines, you know, for...
There's going to be some groups that just don't meet that often, I mean, they may not even start meeting until like a month before their event, and so...
That's my concern.
Trying to get them to apply in July, or something happens in March.
Make people aware that, of what our dates are.
And by them being open, we won't, I don't...
The thing I think I would emphasize about it is, at some point on a relative year, funds may be depleted. I mean, it's just, it is a first-come, first-served basis of who's gotten stuff in, and if all of it gets yucked up in a first round of applications, which you liked all of them, the money's not there. So that's just kind of the, that's the one thing that's out there, and the application does make, does mention that, that it's a first, you know, it's, as funds are there basis, but that is the...
So the advantage to having a once-a-year due date is we can look at all of them and pick priority perhaps.
Correct, but then some do it, some don't, it's a, there's no right or wrong way to do it, it's what is...
I, I, I think that, I don't know, I don't like the idea of only one year, I guess, is the bottom line.
Yeah, I find that a little difficult in our count of budget.
Quarterly, I think.
I mean, I think a quarterly...
Quarterly.
But then you might, if, but if you're concerned about having money there, you might only want, what you could do is put in here that each quarter, we're only going to do a quarter of the money available. So that way you have it out there, unless there's a, unless there's a bigger project that you end up wanting to do, and you can throw that in there, that that can be considered. But normally, each quarter's application cycle, there's X number, you know, there's a, there's one quarter of the money available, and that's what we're going to award that period, so we give chances to the people, that's up to you guys.
Why don't we just leave it open like it is, where basically it's first-come, first-served until funds are depleted? I mean, and that way, if there is a big project in the middle of the year...
How do we get funds every quarter?
Ex-quarterly.
Well, that's what I was thinking, yeah.
It is quarterly.
So we pretty much can't give out money that's not there anyways, unless we have reserves or repaid.
Right.
So I think that works pretty...
And if you don't like a particular set of projects in one quarter, you can always deny them and let it build up to then do more than that.
Build up for the second quarter, yeah.
Exactly.
To where if you say, we're going to, we're going to give out X amount of dollars per quarter, you're committed to giving out X amount of dollars.
And then you can, yeah, I think it works...
There's nothing in this that mandates you have to do it, I just would make sure that it doesn't, unless you're, like I said, looking for that bigger project or something like that, I would make sure that stuff is getting fairly spent, so it doesn't look like you're building up a slush fund, you're allowed to, but it just doesn't, it doesn't look great.
So, yeah, that's why I put the diary notice for Jackson County as a...
One of the, one of the things I thought I saw in here, it came from, which I'm trying to look for, as I didn't have it marked down, um, was of the 70%, some of the, these jurisdictions were only allocating grant, these grant applications be awarded to like 50% of those funds, and not, not all 70%, so that then, half, whatever percentage could then be saved on the larger projects, idea that they, they determine that they want to go after, bond, or acquire.
If we can do that, we'll have to put a number on it though.
Yeah, yeah, that's true, but I just think, at some point, we should think about... Yeah, yeah, that's true, but I just think, at some point, we should think about, okay, so we're starting to see applications, is there some projects moving that we wanna, you know, look at?
I got a list.
Without, yeah, exactly, without, you know, people coming to us, how about we go after some of these projects ourselves with some of this money?
There's nothing in this application that says, you guys can't look for, like I said, supporting particular events every year, if that's what you end up wanting to do. This is just a process for people that are asked for money that's available, so there's nothing in this that commits you having to spend all of it on this small grant program, cause Newburg does the same thing. Newburg had some bigger ticket items, and the same with Clamath County, there's, they have, they have three different levels, you know, large, medium, and small, you know, and more annual, or, so it's, there's, like I said, there's a lot of, as long as you're in the tourism world, there's a lot of different menu options, it's just what the council's looking for for policy.
Yeah, let's just get it up to basis.
Right.
It can be amended over time as we discover what we need to do differently.
We can have it added to a regular meeting or a work session to discuss projects.
Later.
Yes.
When we're, maybe like, gotta town the insurance.
Correct.
I mean.
And the laws in the.
I just don't wanna work him to the bone.
One thing I wanted to throw out there, that some jurisdictions do, and I'm really not recommending it, is some jurisdictions only pay out the money as expenses come in, or they do a retainage thing. I really don't suggest either one of you do that, cause.
We don't have the staff.
You don't have the staff to do it.
And we do ask, I mean, it says receipts are required upon request, um.
Right, but you don't have to.
Plus, they have.
And honestly, your better, your better way of dealing with it is, if somebody decides to flake on ya, one, you got a legal, you got a legal document to sign that defines them certain things, you know, the application becomes part of their contract, what they represent in the application is what they have to do, and number two, you just don't give it to them again, and if you burn us on it.
Well, and that's, I think there was something in here, I thought, that said, something about you would not get to have the money again if you failed to perform on the contract, that maybe I didn't put in there.
So, if someone asks for money for a project and they spend it, and then the whole thing falls through, we need a refund, is that correct?
No, if they didn't, the, the, refunds only occur when the money isn't spent, so I mean, if the project fails, that does happen sometimes, you know, so you have something unexpected happen, you've got an event that's weather-dependent, and you end up with a, with a snow in July situation or something along those lines, but they already paid vendors, that is not in here. But if they don't spend all the money, then they have to refund back what they don't spend.
But if they make an honest effort?
Yes.
So as long as it's within the guidelines of what they said they're gonna spend it on.
Exactly, and then the thing just fails because of no, you know, no fault of their own.
Right, right.
Yeah, it's just that they don't spend it, and that's the contract and this dress that, just unused funds, yeah.
I just noticed that individuals actually was already on there somehow.
I saw that too just now.
I wrote it, didn't I? Didn't do it, so I will have to adjust that, but I will have to adjust the numbers that are correct on the last two.
Yeah, which are in the count, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, nine, ten.
I'm not gonna say what town it was.
Uh, number four, projects related to residents of Newburg.
Yeah, that one we have to change, and then we talked about, uh, before you came in here, Darwin, on types of projects, consideration of other events is on a case-by-case basis, adding in outside of twenty mile radius in, within Lake County.
So if we're gonna do something, maybe I'll plug.
South County stuff.
But that kinda lets you know, we will go outside of the twenty mile radius as well.
What you could do though, is you could just put the radius at, as, you wanna go any further north than, well, I don't, I don't know, do you wanna limit yourselves?
We just limited it ourselves, we had, we were doing here, weren't you, the discussion, oh, we weren't here. We had a pretty good discussion about it, because, um, you know, North Lake has their own.
They have their own chamber, and there's, exactly, so it's a different, it's a different.
As much as we want to support the county, we also know that there's counties that don't do that.
And people from these other places, Adele, Flash, Paisley, um, maybe even Summer Lake, but, they would, are more likely to come to Lakeview to eat or to stay, but North Lake, they wouldn't, they drive a hundred and twenty miles.
Right, Paisley they would drive, they would make that move from Paisley, but that, that was about as far out, I would think that they would wanna come to Lakeview, to Paisley.
Yeah, Summer Lake is, well, they're cabins.
Paisley's only got one motel.
So that's one way, I think the way we can discuss it is like, or last, and then add it in the case-by-case.
So, are we, uh, clear on this then so far?
Clear.
Goodbye. Okay, see anybody have anything else? Okay?
So I'm gonna suggest, before you close out, that those changes you've made, did you guys want to actually, did you guys have some dates in mind that you guys were thinking about, as far as, I know it's quarterly, but you were thinking about specific dates? Does anybody have any ideas of kinda what those would be, or you might wanna say, like, the regular, the regularly, the secondly regular or first regularly scheduled meeting of March, or something along those lines, cause they do, you do have some movement, that might be the easiest way of doing it.
To, to look at the application.
Exactly, you might wanna say, the first regularly scheduled meeting of.
And you gotta determine if you're gonna go quarterly on fiscal year or quarterly on calendar year.
Right.
Physical.
I, because it's coming in quarterly, huh, it better be fiscal, cause if there's an audit, it's looking at it, they're gonna wanna be on, you're gonna wanna be on a fiscal year basis, you're gonna be one July one, everything else you do with money is July one to June thirtieth, so stay on that, so.
Well, most businesses, everything's done on fiscal.
Okay, so, applications must be submitted prior to the event, will be reviewed by town council quarterly of a physical year.
Of the fiscal year.
Fiscal.
Which is, and I put in the fiscal year dates.
In the months of March seven.
The first business meeting in each month of, of.
Of that quarter, so it would be the first regularly scheduled meeting of July, then your next quarter.
We'll be choosing.
So, but, it says that we will be in March, June, September, and December, so it'd be the first.
I, I, it should, it should be July, it should be, it should be the first meeting in July, and then, okay, June, July, that could be, July, August, then September, so then your next one's gonna be October, July, October, January, April.
Will that coincide with our funds and?
They're coming in quarterly.
Yeah.
Okay, so, yeah, there's issues there. Do we really wanna do it in July though?
It'd be better, June's, Iowa's actually, June's worse, so July's.
Because.
June will be tied up with budget.
Budget, yeah, you, you have to get that budget adopted by the end of the month every year, so, yeah.
October and January.
Yeah, we don't wanna do this.
And like I said, it should read the first regularly scheduled business meeting.
First regularly scheduled meeting of. Okay. And then there's one other change. So if you choose to do it, is there?
If we have nothing else, then we will adjourn the meeting at, uh, four.
Forty.
Forty-eight.
Forty-eight, no, forty-eight.